Good evening. I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting to order. Let's please stand and say the pleasure of allegiance.
Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, in consideration at the passing of Mr. Luda III, I would like a moment of silence, please. Obviously, you know he's done a lot for this town, and I think he deserves that respect. He's made Smithfield look entirely different over the years, so I appreciate what he's done personally. At this time, I would like to move the closed session. I'd like to have a motion to move it to the end.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move items three under A, B, and C to the end of the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
This time, we have the informational reports, the town manager's activity reports.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet was the activity report for the previous month, as well as the committee summary reports. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Stallings? If not, at this time, we have some presentations. We have sworn in a new officer, Ava Abbott, Chief.
And the Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you all on this evening to announce the newest addition to the Smithfield Police Department. Ms. Abbott, would you come up, please? Our newest member of the Smithfield Police Department is Ms. Ava Abbott. Ms. Abbott comes to us from Middlesex Police Department, where she served there for three years. She relocated closer to this area, and she chose to want to be employed by the Smithfield Police Department, and so we are glad to be bringing Ms. Abbott onboard as the newest member.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ava Abbott, do solemn swear.
I, Ava Abbott, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge all duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the town of Smithfield.
As a police officer for the town of Smithfield.
In Owlet County, Virginia.
In Owlet County, Virginia.
According to the best and my vote.
According to the best and my vote.
Ms. Abbott, you have just taken the oath of office, and I'm about to present you your badge as a Smithfield Police Officer. You see that this badge is nice and shiny, a brand-new badge. This badge represents the public trust that many of the citizens here have entrusted us to do the right thing, even when no one is looking. Your challenge as a new Smithfield Police Officer is not to erode that public trust, not to tarnish your badge, because if you tarnish this badge, which is nice and shiny, not only do you tarnish your badge, but you tarnish every badge of the men and women of the eight. It has taken us a long time to build a public trust, and we hold it very near and dear to our hearts. That's our motivation to go out, going out and do the right thing. We have a lot of public support, and we value that public support. That is a huge part of our job. So as a new Smithfield Police Officer, we're not teaching you how to be an officer. You've been a deputy for over three years. Now, we're going to teach you how to do it Smithfield's way. Having said that, do you think you can uphold your challenge of not tarnishing this badge and the badge of the men and women of the eight?
Yes, sir.
Well, congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Ms. Abbott. At this time, I'd like to, for Terry Andrews, to come to the podium, please.
This is a resolution of appreciation to Ms. Terry Andrews, whereas Ms. Terry Andrews has served the Blackwater Regional Library, formerly known as Walter Cecil Rawls Library System, with distinction for many years distributing unwavering dedication, professionalism, and a deep commitment to public service as a youth programmer and branch manager for the past eight years. And whereas during her tenure, she has made invaluable contributions to the library community through building lasting programs and partnerships with Owlet County and the town of Smithfield. Terry has also instrumental in the Isle Read Program, Birthday Bag Partnership with Owlet, Christian Outreach, and Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. Whereas Terry has positively impacted the lives of many young people through her knowledge, kindness, and enthusiasm for learning, and whereas Terry Andrews' retirement marks the conclusion of a remarkable career and the beginning of a well-earned new chapter. And whereas Terry Andrews, I'm sorry, and now therefore be it resolved, I, Michael G. Smith, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, does hereby extend it heartfelt appreciation and sincere gratitude to Terry Andrews for her years of outstanding service and enduring contributions to the Blackwater Regional Library. We wish her all the best in retirement with joy, good health, and fulfilling new adventures. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread amongst the permanent records of the town of Smithfield, and that a copy therefore be delivered to Ms. Terry Andrews. This is adopted the second day of September 2025 and signed by Michael G. Smith, Mayor of the town of Smithfield.
Now, we have public comments. The first person signed up is Shane Homer. I hope I pronounced that right.
Very close, Shawn Homer, but that's okay. I'll take any way you got it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Shawn Homer, 101 Great Oak Circle, Smithfield. Good evening, and thank you for the time tonight. I'm here to talk shortly about short-term rentals in Smithfield. For those that don't know, I've operated a short-term rental in the community for about two years now, but have actually owned that house at 111 Institute Street since 2018. It was my primary house at that time, and since then, like I said, have been operating it in the last two years as a short-term rental. What, you know, it has done for me is it allows me to continue to help make updates to the house. I did a lot of updates when I lived there individually, and now that I can operate it as a short-term rental, as given by this group, I'm able to continue to make repairs and updates to that house. In fact, I'm hoping to bring here in the next month or two, a plan to update, put in a new fence that matches the style and characteristics of the downtown, as well as put in a railing on the front porch, so you'll be seeing that. If anybody has any pictures from 1910, when the house was built, I would sure take them because I would like to match the characteristics of the house as it once was as close as possible. So that's what it has done for me. I think what, as I always listen online, mind you, at 2X the speed to this council, so it was a little slower today, what I think it does for the town, add some extra tax revenue from the standpoint that I pay county and local taxes associated with it. But also, I have gotten, you know, when I started this, I wasn't quite sure who I would get to visit, and what I have noticed is it is not any individuals from Smithfield staying there, but it is individuals that are coming into towns for baby showers, for weddings, and they're looking for a place to stay, especially when they've heard all the great things about our farmer's market. They're looking to stay there so that they're within walking distance of the farmer's market. I've had individuals that have been stationed at the Surrey plant, they've stayed there for a period of time, as well as I've had some individuals that were looking for housing in the neighbor, or in this area, needing a short-term place to stay before they ultimately found their permanent house. And so, you know, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit different perspective, and that, I guess, I wasn't quite sure how I would tee this up, but it was on the form, so you have my email and my phone number. And so if you ever are looking for a different point of view, some additional feedback from somebody that owns a short-term rental in Smithfield, I'm very happy to volunteer my time, my effort, my limited knowledge to this group or anybody else that's asking. So with that, thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sir, do you own additional units or just the one?
Just the one. So I own my primary house today, which is at 101 Great Oak Circle, and then I own the short-term rental, which was previously, since 2018, it was my primary house back then, and then, like I mentioned, over the last two years have been operating it as a short-term rental. Does that clarify your question?
It does.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. This time, we have Bob Small.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. As I promised at the previous meeting, I will be here to update you all as we work forward at 1502 McGruder Road. As, you know, we retain Davis and Associates to conduct the necessary surveys to delineate the RPAs, the RMAs, and they've also been retained for any BZA work, so that it will be with the same companies, so we don't have different companies involved. They did initial survey work last week. They have some more survey work, they told me, on Thursday that needs to be done, and they're looking toward having the RMAs and RPAs delineated sometime before mid-September. And as you all know, those are necessary requirements in order to put a plan together to actually do the work at the property, and as soon as we have that, we will get it to Ms. Clary so that we can keep moving forward. But things are moving forward, and we really appreciate you all working with us on this. And in October, I will be in Maine. We take my mother to Maine every year. This year, it's in October, so if it pleases, I'd like to submit a written report through council to you all for October rather than in person.
We'd appreciate that. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Small?
Thank you very much.
If you're none, thank you, Mr. Small, for coming out.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
This time, we have signed up Jenny Soul.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council members. I'm Jenny Soul from Church Square, 104 Richmond Avenue in Smithfield. The citizens of Smithfield deserve a full, complete, and transparent report on how the overpayment for our town attorney occurred. We request the Town Council release a full public report explaining the circumstances of how the overpayment occurred and what steps you're taking to keep it from ever happening again. In less than 72 hours, we have obtained more than 60 signatures on a petition requesting full transparency on the misuse of taxpayer funds, and I'd like to turn those over to somebody if you'd like to have them, okay? That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Soul. This time, we have signed up Bob Hines.
Bob Hines, 16 Washington. Now, if I say anything, it's bad information, and I apologize, and I'll take correction, okay? The recent flap concerning the town lord's compensation has unanswered questions. The prevalent statement seems to be from Mr. Riddick, and I quote from the Smithfield Times, "Obviously, we, the council and myself, failed to properly document the change." Obviously. What the citizens want to know is how and why. We just did it. That's just too simple of a statement. What I have to say has nothing to do with increased fee, which I understand is competitive and fair, but the process. Furthermore, I'm not really respecting or casting aspersions as any suggestion of any underhandedness. Pardon me, I take some medication, makes me hoarse. Just asking the usual question, anyone and everyone, what did you know, and when did you know it? I was a purchasing agent for all stock items for my company for 20-plus years. I also processed all invoices for purchases that are made, as well as the invoices related to special orders made by sales personnel. If I saw an overbilling or even an underbilling, I notified the vendor to find out what the deal was. I did not submit the invoice to our payment department until I got a corrected invoice and justifiable clarification as to why the invoice was different from the original quote. From what I read in the Times, some past council members recall a conversation in Town Council meeting that Mr. Riddick's fees should be adjusted upward, and that it was consensus to that effect, but no formal vote taken. Maybe that was considered enough justification to begin submitting new and higher fees. Maybe council members did not know that a vote and proper documentation was required. Mr. Riddick certainly should have known. Mr. Riddick is the constant in this situation. Payable personnel has changed, town managers have changed. Mr. Riddick is the one to keep the town personnel on the straight and narrow. As I previously stated in another meeting, if anyone knows how this slipped through the crack, then he did not just say, "I didn't know," protocol. That's also just not good enough. Someone or someone saw the increase and paid the higher billings without questioning, as was part of my duties in my position, or someone or someone's approved the new hourly rate. Who and when? This appears to be a who-shot-John situation, with no one willing to step forward and explain just how this situation transpired. Was everyone asleep and well? I repeat, it is not about the rate. I understand it's competitive and fair. It's about transparency and accountability. Both seem sorely lacking. On another note, if Mr. Riddick's hourly rate was static from 2008 to 2017, he might have been working too cheaply toward the end of that time period. Further, since I understand Mr. Riddick's hourly fee is paid as a contractor, and he gets a 1099 tax form as an independent contractor, this should not have been handled as a personnel, in other words, employee matter, with both meetings closed, but rather as any other contractor for the public to participate in an open council setting. There are many that would like to know what went on in those two meetings. I request those two meetings, video, audio, or whatever be released to the public on the town site. Citizens will want the unedited recordings and not some filtered verbose from the mayor or any council member. If I'm told that this is a legal problem, statute must be cited. In the not-too-distant past, many of you were sitting out here in the peanut gallery and would be questioning a six-to-one vote with no public explanatory statement. Referencing the Town Council's vote to seek outside legal advice, a recent Times editorial reads as follows, "The current Town Council majority, whose members were in and were elected overwhelmingly on a platform of transparency, has passed its first test and met the moment. We're confident taxpayers will soon get the answers they deserve." I realize this whole fiasco might be much ado about nothing.
One minute.
But since it is out there, taxpayers, citizens, need to be made aware that if this is indeed the case, that it's much ado about nothing, be doing everybody a service, including Mr. Riddick, to just clear this thing up. Council members, you might know the answers, but the public does not. I repeat and paraphrase, we just didn't document it, doesn't cut it. After all, this is not about potential 60-foot-high structures at Pierceville, or Mary Harris being concerned about increased traffic on Gray Street due to the future buildout of Pierceville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. We have no one else signed up. Is anyone still can come forward if they'd like to? If there are none, I have council comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
Bob, thank you for your comments and for all of you who have raised the question. Couple things on my mind in general that I would like to share first, and then I'll go to some specifics, hopefully to answer some of the questions that some of you have. When we talk about transparency, and we do that a lot, it seems to me that that is a term that describes a process and a behavior. It's only until recently, perhaps the last two weeks, that it has become an item that is timed or clocked for your Town Council to do its due diligence and to come to conclusions that are shareable and are not half facts or misrepresentation. Takes a little bit of time. The two closed sessions that are most referenced here lately in the last couple days, about which you do not know much, both happened within a week. The last was last Friday, one business day ago. My point being, give us a chance to be as transparent as we have promised to be. We will do our best to give you information across the board, trusting everybody will chime in when the time comes. The second thing, kind of off kilter, but still part of this, in the last week, I had two very interesting questions. Somebody asked me what the heck the Fourth Estate is, and somebody asked me, is all this the fault of the newspaper? Well, it appeals to me, since I'm a history teacher, so quick history lesson and a civics lesson. Back in about the 1790s, a guy named Edmund Burke made a comment in Parliament, he was a parliamentarian, he was a lord, and during that time period in England, society was divided into estates, bodies of people who acted collectively about similar situations. There was the monarchy, the royals, sometimes the church, sometimes the commoners. And Edmund Burke identified another group that played a very important part in a democratic republic. That was the press. And to paraphrase Mr. Burke and those that followed, "The press is important because it keeps the bastards in government honest." So however you read articles in the newspaper, the decision on how you interpret is yours. Everybody comes to those readings with glasses that form their own perspective. Maybe you like the article, maybe you do not, but free societies, democratic republics, must be served by a press that is not afraid to shine the light on areas that we all need to consider. So the Fourth Estate, sometime the press, and for us as a governing body, we should never fear the light that they might shine on issues that we need to discuss. On August 25th, we had a closed-session meeting, during which all of Town Council participated and talked quite a bit, except for the mayor, who was absent, taking care of himself. A couple things that I think really jump out about that meeting. We were there for six hours and 28 minutes. It was a long, special session. One of the things that's important for citizens to realize is that meeting was the first in which we considered or went into operation under some nascent new guidelines about how we are going to conduct closed-session meetings. One of the most important things, those of you who watched or were public know this now, one of the most important new steps, we will not go into closed session ever again without the town manager reading the purpose for those closed sessions, so that we all know, okay? That was always confusing to me, to others sitting at the table, we're going into closed session for 22.76898, and nobody knew what we were talking about. In the interest of transparency and good governance, we have gone further. What we do first when we go into a closed session is reconsider whether or not we think that the item before us merits closed session, private conversation on the part of Town Council and the others present. I share that with you because it's important for you people to know that we did that on August 25th, and no one at this table, not one voice, raised a question about going into closed session to discuss the issues at hand, including the controversy surrounding the pay raise that we will be addressing more tonight and in days in the future. For about two hours of that six hours, our conversation did indeed focus on the controversy before us and how we might best proceed to get a handle on this not-so-complex question, but a situation that has ridiculously complex answers, because there's just not very much there for us to go on. More on that in a minute. A lot of our discussions centered on the difference between intent and impact, and our specific questioning began with questioning the town manager, asking him if he could shed light on what happened on the town side of this procedure that completely broke down and led us to a point where we had serious questions with apparently no answers. He was quite frank in his responses. He was honest in admitting a falling down on his particular management of the last couple years in this, and he took full responsibility for the mismanagement and the lack of oversight over-managing the reviews and the structure of contracts, not just with our town attorney, but with others also. We asked him to further investigate, to talk to our staff, to find out if there was anything to find out. Mr. Hines, you raise a great question, as do several others. There is almost nothing of concrete value in the past in our town operations. There is one existing contract. There are no other written, provable, formal approvals of salary increase. There are conversations, there are notes, there are a lot of things that your Town Council is trying to get to the bottom of, colloquially, to see if we can't figure out what is the best way to address our staff and the best way to proceed to make sure this doesn't happen At the end of some of those questions and conversation, this next statement is my personal, the rest certainly. I came away believing that our best approach to this investigation in dealing with this controversy was to focus our efforts on a corrective policy and not a punitive one. As we share what we know, I hope it becomes evident to all of you that there is absolutely no evidence on the part of anybody, three town managers, two treasurers, a number of staff people, and dozens of Town Council folks who have sat in these chairs and be responsible for our governance while this controversy boiled and came to light. At the end of that two hours, we came to a couple conclusions. Clearly, there was gross mismanagement and an absolute lax oversight regarding the increased fees for our town attorney. The council determined to establish new policy and procedures, which we are in the process of considering and will do in the very near future, to guide not only the writing of contracts that affect the town attorney, but the writing of contracts that affect all outside contracted services. We've got a lot of work to do with that. We need to make sure there are no loopholes, there is no escape, everything is public, clear, and enforceable. That is our goal, and that is our promise to our citizens. We also talked about the role of the town attorney. We also talked about the role of the town attorney. What did he do? What did he not do? He was not present, was out of town, so he could not answer our questions directly. So our basic conclusion at the end of that was that without the town attorney present, we needed to offer him the opportunity to come and speak to us and share his perspective. He has since done that, and more on that later. What we also concluded at the end of that meeting is that none of us are legal experts. None of us have a degree in contract law. None of us are lawyers. And as a group, we are not by nature, by purpose, or by statute, an investigative body. With that in mind, we agreed while still in closed session to come out of closed session and propose and agree to having town management hire an outside attorney to guide our next meeting to provide insight, guidance, and legal advice and legal interpretations during our next meeting. Before returning to closed session, I was presiding, and I went around the room and asked by name and by person, so that we were all on the same page about how we wanted to at least generally proceed. And to a person, every member of your town council, in response to this question, "Do you believe that there is any evidence of malfeasance, illegal activity, attempt to defraud, or to mislead?" And to a person, not one of us left that room believing that there was any intent to defraud, deceive, or mislead. We went into closed session on August 29th, again opening the meeting with the statement, "Do any of you have a problem withholding this conversation in closed session?" Once again, now all seven, with Mayor Mike back in charge, all seven of us agreed that this was a proper setting to pursue a further investigation. We were joined by Ms. Alejandro, an outside attorney from a firm in Richmond with great experience in contract law and contract negotiations. We were also joined for the first part of the meeting by the town attorney, who was at that point given the opportunity to speak to us and share his perspective and observation as to where we were at this particular time. Contrary to the opening line and the story that immediately followed this meeting, we were not in there for an hour. We were in the company of the outside attorney for no less than 90 minutes. And during that 90 minutes, town council and Ms. Alejandro had a significant, in-depth, legally-based conversation, a question-and-answer period, if you will, which considered not just black and white legal issues, but the whole controversy and the way for us to best approach it as we seek remedy and improvement. Let me share two takeaways, and then I'll yield the floor. In response to questions, and we were all very active, everyone asked questions. In response to questions over and over again about legal activity, legal responsibility, Ms. Alejandro repeatedly replied that the biggest problem you have here is misunderstanding, mismanagement, lack of oversight, poor policies, poorer procedures, and a lack of leadership, hampered by the fact that leadership changed a number of times over those years. Every time we asked her, and we asked her from a whole different range of directions, every time we asked her to evaluate the legal position, activity of the town attorney, she said that she saw no evidence of malfeasance, illegal action, or any attempts to defraud the town of Smithfield. Don't misunderstand, as we did not. At no time did she attempt to exonerate Mr. Riddick. She did not offer any excuses for his role in this. But she did very clearly say that this is a mess that you need to fix now so that it never happens again. I would also like to point out, and I'm sure we'll get to this in different aspects, if not tonight, certainly in the future. Part of the concern of the citizens, a valid concern, is that the way that this was handled and the way the raises came into play suggests that taxpayer money was mismanaged, mishandled. And there may be some truth to that. There has been a public statement by many that one of the first things we should do is seek to make public money whole. What we have not yet seen in the papers, so I would like to share it now. Almost the very first thing that came out of the town attorney's mouth was a volunteer's statement to write a check for the difference in the monies right then, at that moment. We were a bit not sure even how to react to that. And we talked about, what amount are you considering, where are we with the numbers? Mrs. Alejandro shared with us that legally, the town attorney would only be obligated to pay any overages since 2024 because there is a statute of limitations in place that prevents the town from legally going into court and securing any other funds. Rather than come to any decisions about that, we have asked the town manager to look into the different levels of outstanding monies from contract period to increase to next increase, to see what monies would be necessary to make us whole, to make it right. I share that with you because it's important that you know that and that this is an ongoing part of what we are trying to determine and to do in the most right and fair fashion. At the end of that closed session, we went back into open session, and Mr. Bowman made a recommendation. I'm sorry, he made a motion, which largely reflected the advice given to us by the outside attorney, Ms. Alejandro. He made a motion that we turn our attention to writing a new contract for the town attorney, and in fact, turn all of that over to Ms. Alejandro and her associates at the firm in Richmond, so that the contract would be extremely specific, would be a one-year contract, and would try to adjust the salary to a, as Mr. Hines pointed out, more fair in terms of market value. That motion was seconded. But I think it's important for all of you to know also that before that vote was taken, I, joined by others, made it clear that there is nothing in that motion that would prevent this town council from reviewing the contract offered from Ms. Alejandro's group, putting any different stipulations or requirements or even metrics of behavior, performance behavior on it, and that there would be no impediment to this town council deciding to issue a request for services for a town attorney at any time that the new contract was in effect. So rather than meeting in the dark and attempting to rubber stamp something that may have already been thought to be approved, we have spent hours and hours collectively and independently trying to do research and to do our very best at coming to some workable, beneficial, fair resolution to this really goofy situation. Again, let me just say, as your vice mayor, as a citizen, as one among who walks among you almost daily downtown and about town, let me renew my pledge to try to be as transparent and direct with you and with my colleagues as possible. And again, let me say with what I open, transparency is a behavior, it is a procedure, and it does not necessarily happen overnight, regardless of the interest in having answers overnight. I appreciate your attention, and return it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Well spoken. Any other council member like to make a comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make some comments.
Yes, please.
I'm not as well-spoken as the vice mayor, he's quite the statesman, but I thank him for sharing that with us, and I'd like to share some insights as well. I'll start, since vice mayor's already covered kind of what's gone down in the closed session, which I appreciate, I'll share a couple of other insights with you. So the first is, you know, as it comes down to this issue and being faced with it and how we deal with it, I kind of linked back to some of my past. So if you don't know, I was a nuclear machinist-made instructor for several years. I was submarine officer and then transferred to medicine. But what I did a lot of was, unfortunately, solve problems. And I took part in many fact findings and many critiques. So if any of you were nukes, you'll know what a critique was. It's basically a really painful sit around the table with the boss, the captain, and answer the questions why. And it goes down really fundamental until you get to the root cause. So a process where you get to the facts and root cause of an issue determines who's responsible and how to correct the root cause of the problem, and follow that with associated secondary and tertiary problems with expediency. Expediency to restore confidence in the ability to execute the mission, because much like our government, you know, the submarine force or your military is also a no-fail mission. A framework frequently used as taproot, it would be really helpful here, but there are many. And sometimes there was disciplinary action, but typically that's not part of determining the root cause. Discipline's not really a part of that. Generally occurs secondary or parallel. Always first step is correct the root cause. So in this case, the root cause to me, as I process this, and I spent a lot of time, as my fellow council members know, thinking about this and sharing my perceptions with them, sharing my feelings with them, discussing openly with them, contacting them as soon as I was aware of the notification, and having a lot of open communication with them or an effort at it. But I was left to kind of do the root cause analysis. And in this case, it seems to be pretty straightforward that when you get to the deviation from the contracted amount to the billed amount and the approval method that was utilized, seem to be the root causes. The law is quite clear, as demonstrated by Ms. Alejandro, that a council must vote to raise the pay. And without the proper billing statements, there never would have been a problem really, without improper billing statements. That would have solved the root cause of the problem. So with proper adherence to the contract and utilization of methods to increase compensation in accordance with state code, there never really would have been a problem. And with full awareness of the contract, all parties involved, the council and staff, again, there never would have been a problem. So this brings us back to the topic of transparency, which we've discussed quite at length over the last several months and in the campaign, been a really focal point. And again, I consider in the context of my training and years of 25 years of service and much like Chief Howe just said, you know, about integrity, we would often say or be taught that a simple perspective is doing the right thing even when no one is looking. If you look to a great American, a fine American Admiral, Hyman G. Rickover, he said, two things I'll share with you, that he said, and they'll lead back to the secondary causes of this problem is, "You get what you inspect, not what you expect. So if you don't expect it, you're not going to find the problem." Additionally, he said, "Responsibility is a unique concept. You may share it with others, but your portion is not diminished. If responsibility is rightfully yours, no evasion or ignorance or passing the blame can shift the burden to someone else." And some of these thoughts are what shaped my mindset, and I kind of think of some elements of transparency that can be thought of in the same manner, doing the right thing, especially when no one's looking. And as such, I want to thank the Smithfield Times directly for their efforts to bring transparency to this issue. I seem to have caught some flack, which is fine. And I don't mind, and I know the Smithfield Times don't mind either. No council members ever saw the bills or billing rate in print from the town attorney or the town manager leading up to the release of the story. Only a billing summary was requested from the treasury in use for the evaluations that had not been completed in years. That request did not include the hourly rate, and the contract in place at the time of the citizens of Smithfield was the only thing that was provided as a mechanism of employment. So to understand that, in trying to understand how to do an evaluation for our forward-looking reports, we pulled position descriptions and things such as that, but for the attorney, we didn't have such a thing, so we came down to how was he employed? And that is when the contract was found. So the contract and the summary of billing is really all we had to conduct our evaluations and where my information requests ended. So through what appears to be Freedom of Information Act requests, the media acted in the spirit of that act, state code 2.2, TAC 3700, which says, "The affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy, since at all times the public is to be the beneficiary of any action taken at any level of government." The Smithfield Times brought transparency to an issue that only a single individual in the town staff was aware of until the town manager pulled the contract, as I requested for the personnel evaluations we recently completed. Up until the Times reached out to the council for comments, only a select few knew about the story, the FOIA requests, or the billing problem, before the Times revealed it to the entire council and had only known about it for a short time, with the exception of the contractor. There was plenty of time to act and be transparent before the release of the story and the sensational innovation and finger-pointing on social media and the like. I have two more topics, and I'm going to try to be brief. So I want to talk about trust. So I feel like the town manager is becoming a little bit of a scapegoat for this problem, and I'd like to go back to the root cause. The contract had never been reviewed, and no one was currently aware of the existence of the contract. We have an excellent town manager. He's not perfect, he's human, just like the rest of us. And he's been advised by the legal services provided by this town council. And I would wager that the reputation of our town attorney, as well as the confidence of a council that has kept that same town attorney for over 30 years without questioning the billing or contract or method of employment or doing a request for services to compare, had instilled in our town manager a level of trust in the town attorney that may have made him feel he didn't need to question the billing or the changes because it shall be the duty, and this is from our town code, "It shall be the duty of the town attorney to draft all bonds, deeds, obligations, and contracts, et cetera, which may be required of him by any ordinance or order of the council, or which by law, usage or agreement should be drawn by the town." So yes, there's certainly blame to go around for this, and the internal process and audit process that failed in this case. But let us not forget the root cause, the lack of knowledge of the contract itself and a lack of public knowledge. And I will say, we were audited, I think annually, since 2008, and not a single audit pulled that specific contract. And the auditors have not yet figured out why, as far as I'm aware. So let us also not forget the element of trust. So in regards to the rate increase of 2018, the lack of knowledge, the lack of public knowledge outside of a limited unidentified number of council members, of only one that's spoken on the record to the paper, in regards to the rate increase of 2018 and the awareness or lack of an increase in 2024, but let us not forget the element of trust. The council sees the level of public trust so high that they The council sees the level of public trust so high that they revoked to renew the contract prior to resolving the issue invoking a 2018 discussion of raising rates as a validation for the change and then validating a non-transparent arrangement. So I think it's more than reasonable that various town managers' level of trust were equally high and although the handy phrase, "Trust but verify," which I'm sure will be used more frequently now, rarely leaves one surprised, the fault is lacking the verification in exchange for trust and having no awareness of the contract until the 2025 evaluation cycle. And I'll close this, my next to last statement with, James Madison said, "The truth was that all men having power ought to be distrusted in a certain degree." Finally, I'd like to say, what have the citizens lost? What have our citizens lost because of this? And I reference a book by Sam Harris. He's a neuroscientist. For many years, I've read this book and shared it with colleagues and even my children. It's titled "Lie." And in this book, it's really an essay, it's very brief, briefer probably than what I'm saying. But in this book, Mr. Harris writes about ethical transaggressions such as acts of commission and acts of omission, stating the former is treated much more harshly than the latter, which we see in society. But about government, he writes, and I quote, "Most of us are painfully aware that our trust in government, corporations, and other public institutions have been undermined by lies." And in writing about government, mostly what he discusses is lies, but I think what he's really getting at is the fragility of public trust. He states justified government deception is a kind of ethical mirage. Just when you think you're reaching it, the facts usually suggest otherwise. So I bring that all up, even though lying and acts of commission are not the topic, not what we're discussing, we've determined no malicious intent has occurred, but what the citizens of Smithfield may lose from the handling of this problem are numerous. The first being public trust, as Chief Howe discussed. Thomas Jefferson said, "When a man assumes a public trust, he should consider himself a public property." Or as Henry Clay said, "Government is a trust and the officers of the government, this town council, are the trustees. And both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people." The citizens of Smithfield may lose public trust as a result of this, but something tangible they lost on two occasions is an opportunity to compare the services provided by the market. In 2018 and 2024, rising fees likely or possibly could have caused the public and some town council members to consider the marketplace and the services available as we do for the town items and in most of our personal lives as we face inflationary measures, we shop and live with our pocketbook and within our budget. So we check the market for alternatives. I would reference the school board. As I understand it, it's currently paying $300 an hour and is quite a larger enterprise. But the citizens in town council, we will never get back the opportunity to consider a comparison of the value of the services to the cost to the taxpayer as these rates evolved, and that is something that we cannot turn back. So for accountability, despite the lack of malicious intent and the confidence the town council has displayed in retaining the town attorney, the firm is not without responsibility and requires accountability. So while the council quickly worked a motion to renew the contract, it was silent on action to make the accounting contractual obligation with the town correct. Contract's been in existence since 2008. One individual's been particularly aware of it and particularly since the 2024 pay increase. Contract is with the town council, is hired at the pleasure of the town council, but the contract is with the citizens of Smithfield. I think this town council and I'll make motions in new business to this nature to take 100% accountability for all payments contrary to the 2008 contract. The law supports this in that, as clarified by our attorney, our other attorney, Ms. Alejandro, the law supports this that an informal raise is not in accordance with state of Virginia code and was supported by outside legal counsel, Ms. Alejandro, is within our rights and recoverable by state law to the statute of limitations and that we would win if we so chose to. While there's no malicious intent and as Ms. Alejandro discussed with us noting that she would not advise on the outcome of our decision-making, excuse me, she would not advise on recommending our action, but she would advise from my perspective on the outcome of the actions that we decided to take. Ms. Alejandro also discussed with us that when asked, "Is there a right way to do this?" She said, "Yes, there is a right way to do this." And that right way was not performed in 2018 or '24. And those laws were presented to us by the town attorney in our closed session. Additionally, I would say recall that she stated there is nothing from stopping the firm from paying back any overpayment or making, or the town council making overpayment a condition of contract renewal. As such, I think a breach of contract with the citizens of Smithfield requires full accounting, external audit, balancing of the book, and making the citizens whole for any non-contractual compliant payments. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Any other council member have any comments at this time? Hearing none, move to the consent agenda items. We have nine A, B, and C. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir. First consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to amend the town's pay and classification plan to add engineer one position. Next, I'd like to have a resolution to appropriate funds from the 2425 general fund operating budget to the 2526 operating budget, $124,324. And then lastly, we have two invoices over $20,000 requiring your authorization. First is the Peterbilt store, $129,324, and Blair Brothers for $41,450.
At this time, we'll move to Public Works Committee. Mr. Harris, nine D.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like us to accept St. Andrews, Royal Blackheath, Ayrshire Loop, and St. Anne's, located Cypress Creek Phase 6 into the town's maintenance system for funding and would have that moved to our action agenda.
Thank you. We have nine E and Public Buildings and Welfare, Mrs. Butler.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proffer amendment to Battery Park Storage. Tammy presented to us, presented this to us at committee meeting and basically we added language that would provide the town extra assessments that if the use ever changed, that it would come back before town council to be able to review and approve.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. This time I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
This time we move to the action sections. We have a public hearing, conditional rezoning, and special use permit, promontory. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning. This would be to the planned mixed-use development, PMUD. This is to facilitate the construction of five commercial lots, a future commercial area, 107 single-family detached units, 103 single-family attached units. This would be for a maximum of 210 units in total, approximately 22 acres of open space. It will be phased, starting with the commercial sites. The road beside tractor supply will be extended with a network of public roads connecting Cypress Run Drive and Turner Drive. The first part of this application is that rezoning, the conditional official zoning map amendment. The uses that the applicant is proposing, the attached and detached units, fast food restaurant, car wash, restaurant, drive-in bank, they are permissible in the planned mixed-use development district. These uses are also in line with the future land use map as the current designations are residential mixed use and corridor mixed use. This provides for primary residential uses and mixed commercial multifamily residential uses. The first special use permit is for drive-through facilities. They are requesting the flexibility to utilize drive-through facilities on all five commercial parcels with the current plan of a drive-in bank and fast food restaurant with a drive-through window. The second special use permit is for the waiver of yard requirements. This would be for reduced setbacks. The townhouse would have a front setback of 25 feet and 20 feet for the corner units, side yard setback of 10 feet, and a rear setback of 25 feet. The villas also would have a front 2520 setback, a side of 12 feet, and a rear of 25 feet. The single-family dwellings would feature a 25-foot front and rear setback and a side rear setback of 10 feet. The required setbacks are 35 for the front and rear and 15 for the side yard setback. The amenities will include the items depicted on L 11 through 15. This includes signage, lawns, grill areas, waterfront deck, outposts, planting, seating nook, top lot with open views to the lake, trails, fire pit, picnic tables and benches, and the rondeck chairs, sand beach. They've also added a dog park with play equipment. They will have a property owners association. It will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the open space, common areas, their BMPs, including their wet stormwater management infrastructure. They are proffering the three road improvements, which include the conditional $1 million towards the construction of the roundabout. And they are also proffering a conditional cash proffer to Islewhite County schools if they are over enrollment capacity at Smithfield Middle at the time of the CO issuance. And they are also capping at 60 zoning permits per year. This application was favorably recommended to town council at the July Planning Commission meeting and the applicants are here with a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Would the applicants like to come forward?
Good evening, council members. Kent Henry, 3122 West Marshall Street, Versum, Virginia. Thank you for the time this evening. I want to take you through a presentation that details some revisions that we have made to our package since coming to planning commission in July. We received feedback from staff and planning through the four times that we were in front of them as discussion items and a public hearing and wanted to make these changes to better suit the feel of Smithfield and create a better living project for our residents. So behind you all, you'll see an updated general development plan. I have the commercial highlighted in blue and that is the five commercial out parcels that have stayed consistent throughout the Smithills on this project. We have the townhouses highlighted in pink and you'll see those are interior and back up directly to that commercial. The townhouses are at 36 units now, so we reduced the density there. I will note that those townhouses comply with the existing building height code for the town of Smithfield, so there's no waiver request needed. The orange highlights the villas, which are also adjacent to the commercial. We have also gone ahead and broken up some of the villas in the internal section in the rear of the property into duplexes and all, we lost an additional 10 or so villa units for a total of 67. And then outside of that, we went ahead and reimagined the single family, created some larger lots, staying in substantial conformance with the plans that have been submitted, but lowered the density to 107 units now. And I will say that as we looked at this project or reevaluated, it's certainly been iterative on our process, but we looked at existing town of Smithfield zoning code and wanted to match that. Whether or not it is present in the PMUD as it is today, we went ahead and had our attached product match the AR residential district from a density and setback requirement. And we went ahead and had our single-family detached match the SR cluster subdivision from a density and setback requirement. So overall, the high-level revisions reduced the density from 238, which is what went through planning, to the 210 units that is before you tonight. We have waived the request for the planning commission waiver on the reduced buffer. You'll notice that on this property line with our neighbors, we are keeping the 50-foot buffer for the entirety of it. Originally, we had requested a 30-foot buffer here behind what was villas and a couple of singles. While doing so, we kept a larger buffer at the rear, which is where our neighbor's house is about 300 feet, you know, northwest of this property line. So kept a larger buffer here, are not taking out existing trees on that tree line, are staying at the top of the hill and are still screening with shrubs and then a physical barrier, which is a three-board fence. As we move down this buffer, we have a three-foot landscape berm. We have plannings on each side of the berm, plannings on top of the berm to create an effective screen and then a three-board fence as well as a physical barrier. Again, the SFD matches the SR cluster, SFA with the AR district. We have VDOT approval for the changes on the consistency memo and then we've created a larger entry park and added in a dog park as well for additional amenities for the attached product. As Ms. Clary noted, our special use permits are for the drive-through facilities and then the waiver of yard requirements for reduced setbacks. Here is our zoning concept plan for the east. We still have the sewer tie-in for Hope Presbyterian Church. This will allow the church to be on public sewer and then expand their parking lot right here, which is currently where subject tanks and drain field are to hopefully help them grow. We are keeping with the proffered phasing, commercial first, no more than 60 zoning permits per year, no rollover, and this is starting at the issuance of the first zoning permit for the project on the residential side. Here is our amenity overview and I'll spin everyone through this once again. So we have a promontory park on the promontory that has a fishing pier, some formal walking trails, and really is viewed as the fishing spot for the neighborhood. We have our dragonfly park, which is directly across from the entrance, really sets up nicely for a lot of green space as you come into the community, well landscaped. We've got some park benches overlooking the water, some more formal seating and a tot lot for the community's children. Our meadow park is our biggest addition here. So we went ahead and shifted a smaller creekside overlook that was on this cul-de-sac to get some further separation from our neighbor's house in the rear of the property and to create a larger, better entrance feature. So we have a, you know, elongated meadow park, as we call it, walking trails, and then a, you know, paved patio, propane tank, fire pit, adirondacks that'll be on a timer and managed by the HOA. We've also added a dog park next to the townhouses. Villas just to offer an additional amenity because we had the open space. Lakeside Park has a pavilion, sand beach, and direct water access. Jumping to the traffic plan, again, we've received the approval from VDOT on the consistency memo. We're keeping four points of access. You know, we have secured the two acres to tie into the roundabout. And we're also cleaning up Cypress Run Drive and that'll be part of our site plan submittal to turn that over to the town as well. And then school impacts, the plan that went through planning commission had 73 students. We're down to 63. Again, we have proffered the zoning permit restriction at 60 a year to help with the matriculation of students into the school system. When we submitted this plan and received comments in December, it was noted that we would be over capacity at Smithfield Middle. At that time, we had 12 students. So we have offered a voluntary conditional cash proffer for the now 10 students at the time of CO if Smithfield Middle is over capacity. time of CO if Smithfield Middle is over capacity. And then fiscal impacts have been updated a little bit at the 10-year mark, which is stabilization. It's 255K a year for the town, 982K a year for Isle of Wight. Touching on the nettle proffers, pattern book for our architectural and landscape standards. We call out the amenity pages in the pattern book specifically, so we will match the conceptual plans shown in the pattern book. Construction of the two-turn lanes, consistent with the Ben's Church master TIA, the conditional payment for the construction of the roundabout and Turner Drive, the conditional payment to Isle of Wight County schools if Middle is over capacity. The residential, or the commercial phasing first, residential developed in phases after, no more than 60 permits a year, no rollover, and then no piers or docks on Cypress Creek. Touching on some of what is in the pattern book, the ARB will enforce architectural guidelines, cement siding, standing metal seam roofs, masonry, real stone foundations, synthetic decks. We're total Kohler, all train builder, dovetail soft closed cabinets, and truly pride ourselves on that semi-custom nature. All right, some photos, and then that is the, those are the updates, and happy to answer any questions or help in any way I can.
Does anyone have any questions? Counsel?
I have a few questions, Ms. Clary.
Go ahead, please.
First, I'd like to share with the council, this is growth rate data that was provided, prepared by our town staff. Got three more if anybody needs them. So I had requested a few months ago some growth rate data for the town, specifically current growth rate, projected growth rate based on approved housing developments, Mallory Point and the cottages, and then additional growth rate changes based on the addition of the Grange and the promontory. And this is what I received. So I would just like to share a couple things. There are no growth rates on here, but I count, there is a new population growth of about 3,000 people expected to take place over 10 years, and I calculated that out to be about 33% or 3.3, if you average that over 10 years, 3.3% annually. So I would just draw that to the council's attention that, can you go back to the slide with the dollar figures on it? I think it's about a quarter million annually is the, what you expect to be the tax surplus, correct?
That's correct.
So, but what that doesn't, I don't think that captures is the cost of growth of services from all of our growth. So if you recall from the county Tischler-Bye study that if, which we have an estimate to do, our own similar study if we choose to approve it, but over 2% growth, they were going into the red on their tax rate and being forced to raise taxes strictly because of numerical growth from residential numerical growth within, I believe it was about 12 or so years at 2%, and at 3%, they were going to have to raise taxes in, if I don't recall exactly, two to three years strictly because of residential growth. So what I would present to the council is, based on these numbers that we have here and an increase of about 3,000, I guess we'll delete, 2,0989, and we'll delete a few for the number of residences changing, but without knowing where this is going to place us, and we already have the bulk of the 1,245 homes that are approved or proposed, 916 of them are approved. So I think that we are already likely edging up to that 2% or greater number, and again, I'm not a mathematician, but it would be helpful perhaps to have a professional do this, do this research. And then I would ask as well, I didn't see in the staff report, so I would ask the question, you know, we have, and maybe it's rhetorical, but we have Mallory Point approved with 700 single-family homes and 100 townhouses, and 104 small, single-family homes at the cottages, which will, after reviewing the price of these homes, will probably be the cheapest homes in Smithfield, I suspect. And so my question that I would ask our citizens and our council is, do we need to build this development? Is this the right decision for us based on our currently approved potential growth rate? And really, the clarity of that would come from what's the maximum that they can build out each year, but I don't have that data. But I think that at a minimum, taking some time to consider this, especially if you didn't review this with the planning commission, you know, this came out on Friday at 16:30, so on a Labor Day weekend, so I'm not sure the 1,400 pages of the package were really able to be reviewed. But the question I pose is, and I would say Greenwood Homes, your product looks great. I disagree with, as you know, your setback SUP. I'm disappointed that we had a discussion about doing that for limited units instead of an across-the-board unit, and some different zoning considerations, but I think there was some interference there that came into play. So I would ask, it could be town staff or Mr. Henry, what is good about this project? Why should we approve this, especially after, if you can consider the growth data that I just provided and the considerations for raising taxes on our taxpayers as a result of residential growth?
Thank you for the feedback. I will note that in our fiscal impact analysis, the methodology there is in, you know, a marginal analysis, so it's our incremental effect on the town's operations. You know, and again, to your point, Mallory Point, I'm sure there was a fiscal impact associated with that and the other approved projects. So, you know, I do think we are covering our impacts specifically with the marginal analysis, but I hear you and your notes. I will say that for me, and I think for a lot of people in Smithfield who've driven by this property, it is beautiful and one of the last large properties in Smithfield to be developed. We are, you know, fortunate that we are in the commercial corridor of Ben's Church and a little closer to Isle of Wight County lines. That has allowed us to bring on five additional commercial parcels that are frankly needed here in the town of Smithfield. You'll note that with these five parcels here, there is a turn lane that gets constructed and a public road that gets extended past Tractor Supply. There is another turn lane and a public road that gets put through these commercial parcels themselves. There is a public road that is then tied into and extended down the rear, and as well as contributions for the funding of the roundabout and additional land secured to tie in for the interconnectivity here. So all of that, with the importance of commercial and the cost to deliver those pads, there needs to be a master developer to bring those online. The residential helps to offset the cost to bring those pads on, as well as bringing the rooftops to make the commercial more desirable and keep tenants in place. I think we offer a great mix of product that, at a high quality, I will say as well, but it allows for attainable housing for people closer to my age with those townhouses. Certainly not everyone wants to live in a townhouse, but it does serve a need. The villas are great for aging in place with a primary level living on the first floor. And then our singles, I think, again, semi-custom, fantastic finishes. And then we've also created some estate lots on the rear of the property. And so I guess, in general, to answer your question, I think we are the right people for this job. You're looking at me, the developer, and me as the builder, so any issues, come back to me. I am focused on creating an active and engaging community, so that means amenities up front, a lot of landscaping, and really delivering on the aspects that will make this parcel great and this project great. And then another note is the fact that we're able to support the commercial and bring those five parcels online and kind of complete that Ben's Church corridor right there, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I hate to do this, but we kind of got caught before the horse here. His head is opportunity to make his presentation. Really, at this point, we should have a public hearing, and then it would be appropriate for the council to ask questions and engage in further dialogue with Mr. Henry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henry. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the promontory. We have three people signed up. Tanya Harwell, is that correct? Tanya? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, just remind me, we have five minutes.
Okay.
It's Tanya Harwell, and I live, I've lived in Smithfield since 1973 at 224 Smith Drive. I'm here to speak, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak about my concerns with my daughter. Our daughter has Freda Willie Syndrome. It's only 30,000 in the United States. She cannot be in a, she has to be in a controlled environment because she has dysfunctional hypothermia and an anatomic nervousness.
This lady has spoken to us before, and I think she's in a long time.
Yeah, I think I am, too.
You have.
That's why I looked at, yeah. This is about accessory building.
No, ma'am.
No, this is for the promontory. I'm sorry. Next, we have signed up Renee Bevins.
My name is Renee Bevins, and I live at 101 Beale Avenue. I'm here tonight to offer tentative support of the proposed development known as the promontory. My support is tentative for two reasons. Well, one of them is gone now, thank you. The developer needs to submit a plan that conforms with our zoning laws. Considering there is a request to change the land use from community conservation to planned mixed use, the builder should have no problem meeting our setback requirements. There's no reason to approve the requested special use permit related to setbacks. If this project can't meet the setback requirements, it's not the right project for this property. If that compliance results in fewer homes and lower density, then our laws have been effective. I think the developer should also be more specific as it relates to proffered amenities. On page L8, it states amenity list may include the following, and it goes on to talk about trails, benches, lake access, dog park. That should be changed to shall, so the developer is compelled to comply. And please make sure that the amenities are on the site plan, so there isn't a repeat of the problem that the Cypress Creek people are facing. I was pleased to see that you increased the buffer, and I just wanted to remind, four of the members of this town council campaigned on a platform of managed growth, and managed growth means complying with our current zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bevins. Next, we have signed up is Bob Thornton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Bob Thornton, I'm at 3752 Little Neck Point in Virginia Beach. I was hired by the landowner of what you see on the plan there as those five commercial parcels to market those parcels. We were successful in bringing Tractor Supply to the site. At the time that went in, the road that is perpendicular to Ben's Church and serves the Tractor Supply was just about all that we could get VDOT to look at at the time. The other five parcels, I have been actively marketing for probably 10 years. The corner parcel down at Turner and Ben's Church, we have a bank committed to that. It's a local bank here in Smithfield. They would like to have a freestanding branch there. I've had several fast food people that want to be on the site, and we really, we cannot sell any of those parcels without access. If you'll notice that the applicant pointed out to you, there's only one access point beyond the Tractor Supply access point to serve the other five parcels. So the roadway in the back, the access point in the back is absolutely critical to market those parcels. In the process of bringing this site to market, I also was responsible for bringing the Wawa site to market. And the Wawa site and the proposed work on this site created a traffic concern, if you will, which led to the study that has created the roundabout. So without the roundabout, these parcels, I don't think can happen. And without the development of this project, as you see, I'm not sure, these five parcels can't support the infrastructure work. It must be done in order to market those. So I would suggest that you give serious consideration of this plan. A lot of time has gone into it, and we have interest in these parcels. And if you drive up and down Ben's Church, you don't have too many commercial parcels in the town of Smithfield. There are many parcels in the county, but as you know, Turner is where the city starts or the town starts, so we're hoping that we'll have some quality tenants in here to serve your citizens. And the infrastructure that serves this property is needed, and it's tied in, and it's literally paid for by this residential project. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Is no one else signed up at this time? Anyone else like to speak on the matter on the promontory? Does anyone have any questions on council again to the vote?
I have another question.
Did you close?
Getting ready to close, yeah. Hearing none, we'll get to that in a minute, okay? I'd like to close the public hearing. You have a question for Mr. Henry?
Yes, sir. What is the, so the buffer, I see, you had requested and received a buffer, so what changed there? I see the park, but why did you decide to make that change after you requested and received the buffer approval?
It certainly was a sticking point as we worked through planning commission with those four meetings. And then as we, again, reimagine this plan, you know, per Ms. Bevins' comments about bringing it into existing town code, certainly we're under the PMOD, and those setbacks right now don't differentiate between the types of residential, so they're 15 side and rear, 15 side, 30 front and rear. So as we looked at existing town zoning code and that SR cluster district with the density and the setbacks in the AR district, our lot shapes changed. These lots here got larger. You know, there was, there wasn't room for housing on this side, and again, with the feedback from staff and through planning commissions about the hesitancy to set a precedent and grant that waiver on the buffer, we decided to reevaluate a solution, and it was, you know, let's make a great entrance, let's create a large park here, a good place for the community to congregate, and we will, you know, shift the houses elsewhere.
Well, thank you for that consideration, especially after it was approved. So you mentioned the zoning, and you matched the zoning, or you attempted to, but couldn't match. So why couldn't you choose zoning that you could match the setbacks on? Why, is that a, is that a showstopper for this plan?
When we started this project in, I want to say late '22, our first smittle was in, I think, September of '23, we had met with the town, and the PMOD made sense for this project, and I think it still does. Again, the comp plan is that residential mixed use, and we're able to, sorry, we're able to deliver that here with these commercial projects and the residential all under more of an umbrella zoning. And, you know, the setbacks we chose and the densities from other town codes, the AR and the SR cluster, allow us to support that public infrastructure that we're putting in and the development of those commercial parcels.
Thank you, and just two comments for our council, two elements. One, as it relates to school proffers, I was busy with other things, but I'm still working or talking with the school board chairman about that. When Councilman Brooks and I went to the legislative summary about two, three weeks ago, one thing we did discuss, though, was proffer requirements, and the attorneys from Sands Anderson there discussed with us that if the county is in the process of modifying their proffer rules, that even though this project is submitted, if the proffer rules change during the submission and prior to approval, that they would still have to adhere to those proffer rules. I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what was reported to us by the attorneys at that event being hosted by Virginia Municipal League. And then I would also... And then I would also recommend, and I'll wait to see if there's any other comments.
Hey Darren, let me just interrupt you. What's the impact? What are you suggesting directly to this project?
Well, I'm suggesting that if we don't vote on it tonight to, I think, I think we, I'm suggesting that we table it for probably a long period of time, because I think that it would be risky governance of us to not understand the growth rate that is taking place in our town off of what we've already approved, and have an idea about the perils that the county that surrounds us is facing, is facing based on their numerical growth rate, and us to not have an assessment and an understanding of what our growth rate is and how it will affect our taxes if we simply just approve growth, how it will affect our taxes in five years or 10 years just because of numbers, adding numbers. So I think it's really important that we figure that out. But what I'm suggesting in regards to proffers is that while this project is tabled or waiting or whatever, if the county fixes their proffer system, allowing their proffer to become nonconditional.
That's not possible. That's not possible. That, that's not how it works. You can't, you, you cannot, and we had a discussion about this the other day, you cannot ask for a proffer.
Nobody's asking for a proffer.
Well, you cannot, the, the county can't fix their proffer system because there is no proffer system. They can amend their comprehensive, their capital improvement plan.
Yes.
But there is no proffer system. That's not how that works.
Right, well, I'm, I'm just talking about it in plain language, so.
Well, plain, no, no, you have to speak in, in specific language, because this is, this is a very specific issue that you're raising, Mr. Cutler. And you, 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 the, and, and we had a conversation, you and I, the other day about, you say there's another way we can go. But I've had a very long conversation with the county attorney about that as well, and it all goes back to the same, the same premise, and that is localities are not permitted to ask for proffers. And you, and they are not permitted to accept proffers unless there are capital items identified in their capital improvement plan, and they have to be, the impact has to be specifically attributable to this, this development. So you, I know you're talking in plain language, but you can't. You have to be very, very careful about how you talk about this.
Yes, but, and I agree with what you're saying, and, and what I'm saying, Mr. Riddick, is that if the county amended their CIP next month, and we had not approved this project per the developer's attorney to me, two or three meetings ago, if the county does the work, then they would, it would change the offer that they could make. Not that we can demand anything, but it would allow them to change the manner of the offer of conditional proffers that they're making.
But they've already, they've already, I'm just, I'm, Mr., I'll let Mr., their attorney address this, because I'm not going to put their words in their mind.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Tyler Rose. I'm an attorney with the law firm Williams-Mong. The, there's kind of a distinction in the proffer world, and the statute is pretty specific when it comes to residential developments like this. There's a general cash proffer statute that relates to cash proffers related to non-residential developments and CIP projects. There's this more specific statute, 15.22303.4, that relates to residential developments and specifically cash, specifically onsite and offsite proffers. The definition of offsite proffers includes a general concept of, or the, the concept of offsite proffers includes the concept of cash proffers as well. Doesn't have the CIP concept either. The proffers related to residential developments need to be specifically attributable to the development. The public facilities concept also includes public schools. So there, the, the CIP concept that you're talking about is a bit different than the residential development statute that we're dealing with here. And so we are limited to, or the proffers that we're able to provide are limited to our specific impacts to public facilities, including public schools. So whether the county amended the CIP projects related to other infrastructure, the more specific statute related to public schools, even if that was included in the CIP project, that specific statute would take precedent over the more general statute. And so that's why the, we were trying to get, you know, a little more flexibility in the proffers, because in theory, there was, the numbers we were getting were a little, not as specific as you, we would have liked, I guess. So the proffers crafted in such a way that we are addressing our specific impacts to that school, and Smithfield Middle School was the only one that was identified, so that's the only one we were able to provide a proper course.
Yes, but correct me if I'm wrong, specifically before, though, when you addressed this issue, you discussed that if the school board and the county's documents that you use to guide your writing were written differently or more appropriately, then that would change what you could propose or offer.
I, if I.
Voluntarily.
Yeah, I mean, if I miss, if I said something to that nature, then I, I, that is the statute, and that's how I have always interpreted it. I don't recall saying that. Apologies if I confused the issue there, but we are limited to the more specific statute related to this issue. So apologies for any confusion I may have caused.
So my point, though, in bringing that up was, though, that if the county made their changes pursuant to those specific statutes that allowed a, a different change, then that can be pursued while the, while the project has not been accepted.
But it can't, Mr. Cutler, because, and I think what he's trying to explain to you is their, their development only impacts the Smithfield Middle School. And they can't offer you money for schools when they have no impact on other schools. So if they amend their plan, the county amends their plan, and sticks other schools in there that are not impacted by their project, they can't offer you money to go towards schools that are not impacted by his development. And that's why they're, they have a sort of a contingent proffer here, which I, we've been talking about it for months, and I've sent to the county attorney for his review, because it, it's, it's somewhat novel, but they've attempted to, they've seen, based on the information that's provided to us from the school system, which is the only place they can get it, this is the impact, if, if this is approved, this is the impact that our development has on the school system. And we, if we impact your school system, we will pay you this money. That's what they're basically saying. But they can't offer you money for, if there's a, a school in Carrollton that.
I'm not suggesting anything of that nature.
Well, but, but that's.
I haven't. I've never said Carrollton.
Well, I'm, you're saying if they, if they amend their CIP to provide for structures that are not impacted by their development, they can't give you any money for that.
Well, then I rephrase it, that the appropriate statutes as discussed, they, they, if they change the documents, I'm not the expert on this, obviously, but if they change the appropriate statutes as you're discussing, right, that would permit that, then that change could be made.
Only the general assembly can change that. They, the, the, the county is bound by a state law. They can't change anything that doesn't comport with state law.
I'm talking about the things that you said they must change to be able to change the way they accept proffers in accordance with that statute that they could do. You said you talked to the attorney about it, and they're not, then they had to get creative, but if they change, as we, you and I have discussed before, that if, if the process or the documentation was changed at the county, that that would change what could happen.
It, it does not, does it?
It does not, not with respect, they can't offer you money for impacts to schools that they don't impact.
I understand.
Well, and, and so I don't understand what you're saying. They're already offering you the money for the, the schools that they do impact, and so that's all they can do.
And they're doing that on a voluntary basis?
Perhaps you and I can just discuss it later.
Well, I know, but you raised the issue right here, and it's.
Well, I don't think I'm going to refine my question any better, so I don't think it's going to help. But I'd be happy to discuss it with you after. But I do make the recommendation that we table to assess our growth rate primarily.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Beaum.
It sounds, and I understand where Mr. Cutler's coming from, he obviously does have the best interest, at least in his observation, in what he deems to be appropriate as far as growth, as far as taxation, things like that, a concern. What I have a concern about is, are we going to be in a position where we're holding something up, right, wrong, of what might come, that who knows when it might come, that even if it does come, it's not applicable to this project? Is that, Mr., is that close to being correct?
Yes, sir.
That's my concern.
I have a question about the conditional proffers. How exactly does that work? I mean, at what point does that kick in?
Go ahead.
Since the, the proffers for the schools are conditional.
Yeah, so the statute reads that it's, you, you need to, that you need to offer a proffer, you can only offer proffers that are applicable to your impact at the time the project is approved. And so at this point, the numbers we're getting, it's not entirely clear that the impact, it's not, it's not an impact right now necessarily, right? Because the numbers may be fluctuating, so we are, there, there is a potential impact as of now, but if in the future, there is a, as projected, a overcapacity at Smithfield, Smithfield Middle School, then we will pay in accordance to what the numbers are. But it's not a specific increase right now based on the.
And who, who decides that, or how is that triggered?
It's written, well, in the proffer, it's written as if there is a.
I'm, I'm not sure of the mechanism, but it is that certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Well, that is the mechanism, said before issuance at that point.
And, and that's it, Ms. Bevins, that's in the proffer.
Okay, okay. That's something I want to double check on. Thank you.
So the way that would work is if the schools have identified they're at capacity, then we would not issue a certificate of occupancy until that proffer.
Thank you. I have some other questions that aren't related to proffers, though. Is that, are you done? You're okay? All right.
I have another question.
Okay. So I want to make sure that I'm clear here, that the townhouses are three-story.
Correct.
The villas are two-story.
Yes. The villas are, townhouses are three stories, but within, again, the existing building height code for the town of Smithfield.
And, and that's where I was kind of going with that.
Yes.
As most people know, I have spoken loud and wide about my disdain for townhouses. However, I appreciate the fact that they are within, you're not asking for an SUP. That, that, I mean, I'm not crazy about townhouses, I'll, I'll still say that. However, the fact that they are within height limits is important to me.
Thank you. And then real quick on the villas.
Yes.
So they're, as you look at them, they are two stories in the front. You have your primary level living on the first floor, so you can age in place.
Right.
You know, additional bedrooms upstairs for guests or kids, office space, but it slopes to the rear of the house. So it's, you know, two stories in the front, one, one and a half in the rear at like 12 feet, so.
Okay.
It's a nice transition from that commercial.
Okay, thank you. And it appears from previous plans that you have, you've lowered the number of townhouses, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I think the original submittal was 88 townhouses.
Right.
And 20 villas, and we're at a blend of 67 villas and 36 townhouses now.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate that. And then also the entrances, Cypress Run Drive, that will become a town road?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you're improving that in the intersection there?
That's correct. It'll all be a part of our site plan submittal and reviewed by the town.
Okay. And then, so that is one entrance into it, and then the other one is the road that is at, by tractor supply, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that'll extend into the neighborhood. And then there's one, one more off of Ben's Church Boulevard?
There's one more off of Ben's Church that splits this commercial.
Right. And then another one off of Turner?
Correct.
Okay, so there are many ways into this development.
Four points of access. So from my side, all I can do to help alleviate traffic is be consistent with that Ben's Church Master TIA, which contemplated 262 units on this parcel. We're now at 210, and still offering those same improvements with the turn lanes and the roundabout that was suggested. And then really just create as many points of access as I can to give people the option on egress and ingress.
And the, can you talk about pedestrian access and sidewalks and where those all are?
So we have sidewalks on both sides of the road within the community itself. We have a trail system back here, kind of through the RPA, that ties back into the sidewalks at both points. And then we do have a sidewalk on one side of the road, down the public road. Again, more likely have sidewalk on the commercial side as well. It just depends on as those site plans come forward and, you know, really figuring out the fit of the end user there. But it's, yeah, entirely interconnected with sidewalk on both sides of the road and tying in.
And can you address the issue that Mrs. Bevins brought up about the may and the shall and the?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So our proffer, number five, reads, "The project shall provide the amenities as shown on the conceptual plan and contemplated on sheets L11 through L15." And so we specifically reference this master plan and amenity overview here, and then on each individual page, so this is L12, that we have to match these amenities, L13, L14, L15. So we are.
So it is all laid out, I mean, specified what will be in those?
Correct. So we went ahead and spent time with our landscape architect up front and, you know, had budgeted for this accordingly. And again, I think where we're a little different is that I need these amenities in up front to help paint the picture of creating an active and engaging community, so residents want to live there, as opposed to developer, builder separation.
Right.
Ms. Bevins, just, because I was going to speak to that, too. Ms. Bevins raised the shall and may, and Ms. Claire and I talked about that, and the proffers say shall.
Okay.
And so everything on L11 through L15, we are going, they shall.
Shall, shall is the big word, right? Okay.
So it's, it's not may, there's no alternating, there's no substitution, it's, it's.
In black and white?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I had another question. And Tammy, you can clarify that the pump station that is there, does that need, that's a pump station that will service that area, is that correct?
This area, this area is actually serviced by Isle of Wight County for water and sewer.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and our pump station is right here on the project.
Okay, that's right. I'm, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, if I think of my other thing, I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question, Mary Allen. I know how you feel about townhouses. I'd like to know why, and can, can you share why you all have included townhouses in this particular project?
Yeah, I'm happy to go first. So again, I think townhouses help us deliver attainable housing. It is our lowest price point, given the, you know, the density you're able to get those in. So what we've done with it is kind of tucked that density internal to our project. We're obviously within the existing town building heights, and we're still on the commercial side of the project. But it allows, you know, again, a townhouse isn't for everyone, but it allows kind of that first-time home buyer an opportunity to buy a house. When I looked on, it was July 24th on rain, to see active listings in Isle of Wight in the town of Smithfield, I filtered it for, you know, homes that were 1,750 square feet or higher, three beds, two baths. We would be 2,000 square feet, three to four beds, two and a half to three and a half baths. So I was just trying to get a feel of what was on the market today, and there were 18 homes that were on the market under $500,000, with the average built in 2002, and the average price at $435,000. So our towns offer, you know, that buyer that's looking at those houses, some of them with days on market, you know, above 150 at this point. It offers new construction, quality construction, at a price that's attainable.
My, my issue with townhouses. My, my issue with townhouses has been that, in general, they just appear to be a wall of, they're not very attractive because they're usually too tall. The fact that these come under our limits, you know, within the zoning limits, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter?
I did have one other. I came to my, so, thank you. It came back to me. What I do like about this is the commercial aspect of it. I mean, we've said for years that this is what we want. We want more commercial development. And so, this is obviously a perfect place for it. And, and as our, our town, I mean, we've said for years and years that we want Smithfield to be a walkable town. And to be honest, this neighborhood is probably the only neighborhood in Smithfield that is truly walkable in terms of shopping, banking, restaurants, coffee shops, pick your, I mean, you could walk from any of these places to a grocery store. We don't have that. I mean, there are very few places where you could walk to a grocery store. So, so although, yes, the density is probably more than I would like, I also recognize the fact that it has to be, you know, with the commercial aspect there, and I appreciate the improvements that you're doing. I think that's important to note, that it, it makes this area very walkable to things that people actually walk to, not just going for a walk, but that it, that you can walk to a store, you can walk to a restaurant, you can walk to a coffee shop, you can walk to the bank. And I think it's a, it's a, the kind of neighborhood that will, will be positive for Smithfield.
Anyone else? Mr. Harris, would you like to speak?
Yes. Nice presentation, Kent. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
As a lot of you know, I came to leaning towards approval for Promontory down the long road. And in the interest of transparency and to try to answer some of the questions that have been raised by the public. And Kent, I'm going to ask you to jump in in a couple of places. What Mrs. Bevan said was exactly correct. I'm one of the four who ran on a promise of managed growth. And from my perspective, working with Kent, has given us an opportunity to do exactly that, to manage growth there. The original number submitted has been lessened significantly. And part of the reason that has happened is that Kent and his team have been open to suggestions from Planning Commission and from town councilors. He's gone back to the drawing board no less than five times, and each time has come back reflecting what we've asked him to do. He's reduced density, he's made lots larger. Mary Ellen was right on, right on point. You can almost go to our comprehensive plan and read about Promontory. It's walkable. There is a number and a variety of home types that run across a broad range of costs. There are amenities that those of us that don't live or won't live at Promontory will be jealous of. There's significant walkability. You know, that's, that's a big push in our comprehensive plan. We don't have it in other places. The folks that live there will have it. One of the great things about this walkability push is that if you can walk, you're not driving. We haven't said much about that, but the way that this is constructed will, just by necessity, reduce the number of cars that have to be out on the road. One of the other things that has drawn me to complete support is the fact that this builder is shouldering the expense of virtually everything that's important to the infrastructure and the outlying roadways that will bring people in and out of the subdivision, and maybe even make travel down certain roads safer. The idea that they've reached out to HOPE Presbyterian and said, you can tap in on our dime, that's a good thing. You know, shows me that this group is interested in being part and parcel of our community. They don't have to do that, okay? It's not on the proffer sheet, but that's, that's a good thing. Waiving the buffer requirement that they were given, to me, that's a good thing. Larger lots, fewer homes, a good thing. Now, to the issue of the special use permits, I went back and made sure that I didn't misquote I have said a number of times, not just in the campaign, but since, in general, I do not think that an SUP is in order if its sole purpose is to increase density and increase the profit for a developer. I've said on a number of occasions that I would look at special use permit requests if they seem to bring benefit to the town and, by extension, the developer. The special use permits requested here, the drive-throughs can't possibly raise any questions. It's the other ones that seem to cause, cause the trip. I can say Renee, right? I don't have to say Ms. Bevan each time. Renee raised a, raised an interesting question about the setback, sideback to yard, the yard thing. And that was something that bothered me a great deal, and some of you know that we went back to Kent and said, listen, you're currently coming in under a PMUD request. How about busting this thing up and bringing it in, in sections so that you are meeting our specific codes? And apparently, that's not possible. Tammy explained it, Mr. Riddick explained it. So, to get done what they want to do, they have to rezone as a PMUD. If they weren't, and this is why, this is why I've come to embrace and do this and not worry about the setbacks. Which, by the way, their request has actually gone down, they're not requesting as tight as, as earlier. But if the SR was just an SR and the AR was just an AR, they are, they are within the setbacks for those specific locations. But because our PMUD is written in such a way that they cannot apply the general standards within the PMUD, we've sort of trapped these guys. We're saying, if this was not a PMUD, these setbacks would be absolutely fine. But because you're in this designation called PMUD, they don't fit. To me, that's, you know, it just sounds contrary, you know, borderline silly. Maybe our fault, you know, we'd probably have to go back and look at it and rewrite it. I mean, Tammy explained that to us, you know, several weeks ago when we were trying to, you know, work around that. So, I guess what I'm saying is that, for me, the request for special use permits about the yard setbacks is not a big issue. And that what this subdivision, this development, subdivision even a word anymore? This development has the potential to bring so much good to that particular part of town. And it's even better that this developer is going to show most of the expense of all of that. So, I am in favor for, of approving the SUPs as requested, as well as moving forward with the project.
Any other further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Murray, I have a few questions. Mr. Henry, Kent?
Yes, sir.
How many cars does your TIA say are going to go on the road? Additional?
Good evening. Devin Simpson with Kimley Horn. I did the traffic impact analysis for both the Ben's Church Master TIA and consistency memo. Are you referring to the development as a whole, the residential?
Yes.
And the commercial?
Yes.
So, roughly combined, there are about 350, a little under 350 in the peak hour.
And does that account for the walkability?
No. So, one of the things that we didn't account for was the, was the walkability, and that was a decision that was made in the Ben's Church Master TIA to be conservative. So, typically, when you account for that, you'll take a reduction of trips off the road. We didn't want to do that. It is our hope that that will happen, but we didn't want to be too conservative in that assumption. So, it's very possible that you could have additional reduction in trips for folks, particularly that are walking from the residential to the immediate commercial that's right here.
All right. So, just to be clear, you could, it'll be weather-dependent, time of day-dependent, seasonally-dependent, but it's not going to remove, the walkability's not going to remove all traffic off the road that comes from this. There will be a net increase in traffic, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So, just to touch on the not possible of the zoning, you know, we had discussed the possibility of the zoning and actually wound up in closed session to discuss it, being illegal, and then discussing, finding out that it actually was not illegal. So, I think that that is what we did learn from that closed session, was that that is possible. And then, how much did the town pay for the roundabout, Mr. Stallings?
The town has agreed to a contribution of just shy of a million, it's 982,000, but it's predominantly, well, it's all associated with the parcels across the street.
Right. So, the, the building of this is not alleviating the town's responsibility to pay that, or is it?
No, sir. Their contribution was already factored into that and agreed to.
So, we will still pay almost a million dollars for the roundabout, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you have five businesses in the business? In the business, in the business section on the five blocks? Did you have five, or did you commit it?
We have two right now, but no LOIs have been signed because the zoning is in place.
Are we opening this up or advertising to any local businesses, or is this all for international, or for national businesses?
I think we're advertising to anyone who will come, certainly. Speaking for Bob.
And then, from the growth data, and this, just a general question that I don't have any idea about, so, it looked like your financials say that we're going to have a surplus of 250,000 annually based on?
A marginal analysis for the addition of our project.
Okay. And it looks like we have approved and considered with the Grange and Promontory about 3,000 citizens coming in over the next 10 years. Can you, Mr. Stallings, or someone, can, can you speak to how that will affect our police and fire department? Cost-wise, as we go up from 9,000 to 12,000 residents, what additional services will we have to provide? What consequences that the growth that we add on to what's already approved can have? How will that impact the town of Smithfield?
Well, the first thing I would say is, I think it's aggressive to think that all 10, or all 3,000 people will be here in 10 years. I think those are on pretty aggressive build-out timelines that likely will not happen. However, the impacts that we'll have, generally, you increase police when you're typically one officer per 500 people. So, as we grow, we'll look to keep track with that. And traditionally, the additional revenue that comes from those additional homes is what is bringing that revenue in to pay for it. Beyond that, it would just be a level of service. Fire is provided by the county, EMS is, schools, the bulk of those services are provided by the county tax dollars. So, we don't have to, we don't incur those costs. But for us, it's predominantly, again, like you mentioned, extra law enforcement. And then, of course, as those people come here, they'll want permits, things of that nature, so we will have to absorb some of that cost as well. But those are really the biggest bulk costs.
And are we going to inherit the streets of this?
Yes, sir. And then, we get reimbursed from VDOT per lane mile. So, as we add lane miles, our reimbursement goes up from the state.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain someone to make a motion to, for the conditional rezoning and special use permit for the Promontory. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any other discussion? Call for the question, please.
Councilman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutler?
No.
Councilwoman Bev Meyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Motion passes. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a public hearing for a text amendment to the following sections of zoning ordinance. We have three of these tonight, and I'd like to address each one of them individually. Tammy?
Yes, thank you. This first one is a text amendment to Article 2P and Q. This would update accessory apartments to accessory dwelling units. They still would require an SUP. However, we removed the family relationship and age requirements. It would also allow freestanding ADUs in addition to ADUs over detaxed garages, and will also not require the removal of the kitchen facilities. For Article 2P, it just changes accessory apartments to accessory dwelling units. Planning Commission did favorably recommend this application with the following conditions. It would be the removal of Item 4, which limited it to only two people, the removal of the breezeway from 8A, and then, 8C, replacing Shall with May for the accessibility from the interior. We also suggest removing the porch patio, et cetera, from 8A that was also included with the breezeway. Thank you.
All right. Hearing the, the presentation by Ms. Clary, I'd like to open the public hearing. We have one person signed up. This was Tanya Hardwell. You can come up now. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Tanya Hardwell. I'm here to discuss about my daughter and her. She has a R.A.F. syndrome named Prater Willie, which is only 30,000 in the United States. And she really needs a separate building to have a little bit of peace of independence in her life, but also to keep her alive because she has hypoth, she has a dysfunctional hypothalamus and an atopic nervous system, which causes malignant hypothermia and hyperthermia. What that means is she can't get too cold, she can't go below 75. So, I have to have a controlled environment. Or she can't go above 81 or 80, somewhere around in there, or she can have a stroke or she can have hypothermia. So, another thing, she has oxygen saturation, so she can't go up and, up and downstairs with oxygen equipment when she's active. She also has hypophagia, which is when you overeat and you crave food. And they can overeat and die in one setting because they have rupture of stomach and necrosis of the stomach. She also has water intoxication. If she drinks too much water, she can, she can get water intoxication. So, she has, I have to, what I can do in that small building is I can bring her her food three times a day. I can also control the temperature of her. Because right now, I'm having to stay up all night long because I have faulty ductwork, and I can't get it fixed because her pulmonary doctor says, no more dust, her lungs blocked. She only has 63, 63% of her pulmonary function. So, she also has sleep apnea, she also has a double hip replacement, she also has thigh bone replacement, she's had a fractured knee, she has osteoporosis, she has scoliosis, she has sleep apnea, she has malignant hypothermia, she has mass cell activation syndrome, which my house is older. The least bit of mold can affect her, not just, it has to be, just a tiny bit can, can bother her, and her body attacks itself. She also has hypokalemic periodic paralysis, which she can't get too cold, she has paralysis, and also stinging and pins and needles and that kind of stuff as well. She also, I try to remember everything. She also has a neurogenic bladder, which I have to catheterize, and I don't have that set up in my house as well. She has sinus bicardia, she has. She has sinus bicardia. She has enlarged heart. She has ipotonia, which is low muscles, which she doesn't need to be going up and down steps. She has seizures. She can't be going up and down steps having seizures. She has cognitive delay, behavior disorder. She has breathing issues. I think that if I hadn't named all of them, that's enough. She just has, she wants a little bit of independence and I, I would be close and I could put cameras in there. And that way she has a little bit of life. We can't even hardly go to a restaurant because they laugh at me when I tell them to turn the temperature up. So it's, she doesn't really have a life and she needs that little bit of life, but, and have, have a little place of her own, but yet be close to me. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have known Ms. Harwell probably the better part of 25 years and the challenges that she is reciting to this council, I can certainly validate. She's had a lot of difficulty.
Yeah, she has spoken about it before to us and I recognize it also.
Thank you. That's, I mean, that's really, I mean, she's got more issues, but there's no need of me to go into everything. I've got to keep her alive. And in order to keep her alive, is I've got to have that temperature controlled. What I was going to do is put an alarm in there, too. If the temperature drops or if, or if it goes above, have that alarm. Plus, I could have a generator to that area. There's a lot of things I can do in a small environment versus a bigger one. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Because no one signed up other than Ms. Tanya Norway. Or is anyone else like to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I'd like to, someone to make a motion for Article two point Q and P, reclassification accessory apartment as accessory dwelling units and clarify regulations. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Article two Quebec and two Papa, reclassify accessory dwelling apartments as accessory dwelling units and clarify regulations.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
For clarification, there were recommendations from the planning commission. Is that to include those recommendations and the staff recommendations as well that were in the staff report? Just want to make sure whether.
You got him?
No, I don't.
I'm trying to conserve my battery.
Can you reiterate what those recommendations were, please?
The planning commission recommendations were to remove item four, which was limiting, limiting it to only two people, removing the breezeway requirement from eight A and replacing Shaw with May for eight C, which is the accessibility from the interior. Staff also suggests in addition to the breezeway, removing porch patio, et cetera, from eight A. Thank you.
So I'll clarify. I make a motion to approve Article two Quebec and two Papa, reclassify accessory apartments as accessory dwelling units and classify regulations and include recommendations presented by Tammy Clary for the planning commission.
We have a revised.
I'll second that again.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? If not, call for the question, please.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah, next we have Article three point zero, update the floor plane, floodplain overlay.
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed text amendment to Article three O, updating our floodplain ordinance. FEMA has updated our flood insurance rate map and our flood insurance study. We did utilize the model ordinance and has already sent it over to the Department of Conservation Recreation for their review and approval. Once approved by town council, it does need to be approved by FEMA. This originally appeared on the April ninth, 2024 Planning Commission agenda as a discussion item as we prepared for our final letter of determination. The planning commission did favorably recommend this application with the condition that the alternative language allowing accessory structures in the special flood, flood hazard area. We do suggest removing that language and including the original staff proposed language that does not allow accessory structures in the special flood hazard area, as that would align with our Chesapeake Bay preservation ordinance. They were concerned about issues where the 100-foot R P A was not present in the special flood hazard area. We have done two overlays and we've determined that that would not be the case. There is not an instance where there's a special flood hazard area that doesn't have a 100-foot R P A buffer limit on it, which means we already would prevent the accessory structures from being present under the C B P O. So by including the original staff proposed language, not allowing the accessory structures, we would be in compliance with our Chesapeake Bay preservation overlay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make.
I'd like to open the public hearing.
I thought you covered them all under one hearing.
No, I have voted all three, they're all separate. Yes, please.
There are no signups.
Pardon?
There are no signups.
Then, yeah, there's no signups. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval, a motion to approve Article three Oscar, update the floodplain overlay as brief to include staff language as discussed by Tammy Clary.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah, this time we have Article three S, create the Pinewood Heights Industrial Park overlay. Tammy?
Yes, thank you. This would be a new overlay for Article three S to create the Pinewood Heights Industrial Park overlay. This item did appear as a discussion item at the July Planning Commission meeting, and the redlined version is attached. The planning commission did make suggested changes, including C one, which would require shipping containers as a special use permit item, and then also removing the accessory structures allowed in the front yard. That would be treated by a planning commission waiver for accessory structures in the front yard under 10 F. This was favorably recommended with those changes by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. This time I'd like to open the public hearing. No one signed up. Anyone like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Michael Gibson?
I was, the only thing I was going to say is that committees, we briefly discussed the shipping container issue, and I figured it was worth a discussion among council to decide whether you wanted to permit any and in which cases you would. The way it's drafted right now, it would require a special use permit for anybody to use a shipping container in the industrial park. But if there, again, if there are conditions in which you would allow them by right, it would be worthwhile to have that discussion and include that language in case there is a situation where the use of it, you people would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I really, I've thought about this since it first came up, and I don't know what, how many shipping containers we're going to be talking about. I would really prefer not opening up Pandora's Box right on the outset versus having the shipping containers come forward as a S U P. If then we decide that things are looking like, you know, maybe, maybe we need to change that. We can do that later, but I'm really not in favor at all in my motion that I'm going to make would not include that in it.
I, I feel like that would give us an opportunity to look at each individual one a little better. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Stallings, what is going to be the cost to apply for that shipping container?
It's an eight hu, eight hundred dollars, four hundred for a special use permit, but it does add at least three months, two months to three months to the process. You know, so that's really would be the cost to the individuals. But again, you know, you guys would have to feel comfortable with that and.
I've driven all through there, and I think this is, could be one of the best proactive projects that our town has pursued that really supports our other anchor employer, which is small businesses. And I, for one, would like to see as few impediments to the least earning small businesses getting in there, but I understand there's a balance. I'm just not sure that the special use permit is the balance. If we could come up with a better zoning ordinance that made it by right, but provided restrictions such as appearance, alignment, you know, we, of course, we don't want three, you know, three containers just dropped down there and every which way.
That is my concern.
But we could possibly draft an ordinance that said if you're going to use a shipping container, it must be freshly painted. It must be oriented, you know, of course, with the property lines, you know, things like that, that perhaps we could look.
I don't have a problem with that whatsoever, but I do not want to pass it on this, on the initial outset.
I'm with you. I, I think making it just a by right use is, would be a bad idea, but making it, making it a barrier to entry.
Would you pay me something to do?
Yeah. I think making it a barrier to entry is not, it doesn't seem to meet the goal of what we're trying to do.
And really, in all due respect, that is not my intent whatsoever. My intent is with this new industrial park going over there, the last thing I would like to see is as you come through the front entranceway, is three shipping containers laid up there in an unsightly manner. Yep, cataclysm.
I'm with you.
Yep. So that's, that's my concern.
Let me throw something out. I just thought of it as we were talking. Possibly allowing one per lot by right and then going down that road. If, if we're trying, we know it's an industrial area. I'm in the shipping business. I've got a couple in the back of my lot, can't see them. This, as I'm talking about, is a pretty visible industrial area. I mean, you can see lot to lot to lot to lot. There's really no delineation. So maybe I might want to rethink this.
And I would think that to make, in any instance where it is a by right, I, I would want it to be shielded from view. And again, it would need to be presentable. I mean, some of them are hot pink these days. So, I mean, it would need to be something that was visually appealing to where it was either shielded from view or something of that nature. So I agree. I don't, we don't want proliferation, but I just know that that's going to be something people are going to ask for. So we can, we can spend some time crafting some guidelines that council may feel comfortable with because I, I think it will become an issue before it's over with, just knowing the, the folks that are going to want to go back there.
I think that's great. Is there, is there any more discussion? I make a motion to table Article three Sierra, create the Pinewood Heights Industrial Park overlay.
I didn't want to table it. I wanted, I wanted to pass it as it was, if it's okay,
in all, for discussion. I wanted to pass it as it was initially presented without any reference to shipping containers. We can then go let the planning commission or let, let the staff work on the parameters that would allow a shipping container, but I do want to pass the overlay.
Yeah, I didn't understand what you were saying. That's a great point.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, too. I'd rather get this in and then we can still be working and fine, fine tune it. So.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Article three S, create the Pinewood Heights Industrial Overlay Park as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah, at this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Do we want to finish?
Do you want to do the, oh, you want to do the?
We got new business to do.
Okay.
Your, your staff does a great job of these. I only find a couple minor mistakes and would recommend the minutes be approved as revised and corrected.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Call for the question.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah, Bill, do we need to go through the new business at this time or can we go into closed?
You could go ahead and do that and then you're through.
Come back into old business and additional discussion. Okay. Our new business, we have Michael Stann, town manager.
Yes, sir. We did receive one invoice since committee's, that's in front of you this evening for approval. As we were, as they were doing the work on the bridge, we became aware of a piece of pipe that needed to be replaced through one of the abutments. So in your packet is the invoice for Lewis Construction for that repair work. It is in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents.
And you, explain how this happened. This was not part of the original scope of the, of the project.
If you want to speak to it, but as that's coming up, I mean, while they were doing this work, there was a piece of pipe that went through one of the abutments that we saw and wanted to get replaced while they were doing the bridge work. Otherwise, we would have had to shut a lane down sometime in the near future to do the work, but we were able to use, utilize their road closure to do the work. But.
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
Good job, Ed.
It wasn't.
Well done. Good answer, good answer.
It wasn't leaking, but what had happened was there's a seal that goes through the abutment on the Red Point side, where there's an eight-inch ductile iron pipe that feeds water under the bridge. It passed through that abutment in that seal. That seal, it actually failed. So the, the ductile iron pipe was laying on the bridge abutment. And as you know, you know, bridges move, the pipe is on rollers. So there is a friction point there where it wasn't supported. There was a potential for a future leak and it seemed like a good time that.
I think I've seen it.
Uh, there's some other spots, but this seemed like a good point to replace this because it required work in the road on the abutment side. A regular leak under the bridge can be fixed from underneath with impacted, without impacting traffic. But this one, we had to actually dig up a portion of the road on the Red Point side. So we replaced that, two sticks of pipe from under the bridge, the seal going through the abutment, and then some of the pipe in the road out to a valve. And we were able to do that without incurring any traffic control expenses, which would probably be, you know, the same price as doing the pipe itself if we had to pay to shut a lane down for a week.
Thank you, Ed. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional invoice in the sum of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, sixty cents to Lewis Construction.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for going into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I have another new business item to discuss.
Go ahead.
We were recently presented with, by the town manager for audit services for the recent accounting situation that we were in. What was the, Mr. Stallings, what was the cost of that?
Forty-one hundred dollars. Yeah, it was forty-one hundred dollars and it's with Robinson Farmer Cox, who is our existing auditing firm. And that was for them to come in and do an external audit of the invoice situation.
And is that going to be, if, if approved, will that be a part of our annual audit with them?
It would be separate and outside of that.
And when could they do such audit?
I would have to pull the quote back up and see what their estimated timeframe was, but it sounded like they could probably get started with it soon.
Okay.
I can pull it up and tell you for sure. It looks like they estimate eighteen hours worth of work. So I would anticipate within probably two weeks they have that turned around.
Okay. And you said it was forty-one hundred?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to fund an audit of the billing between town Smithfield and the town attorney's firm to determine the extent of any over or under payments since contract start date, 2008.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion?
I do have a question. Um, reviewing contracts, that's not in our annual audit process?
The way they do that, when they come in, they pull a random sample of invoices.
Excuse, excuse me, Michael. Who's the they?
Uh, the auditors, Robinson Farmer Cox. So they will pull a random sample of invoices and then check those against contracts that are in place. And when I spoke to the gentleman with Robinson Farmer Cox, he said over the years, the attorneys have never been in their random sample. So that's why they would not have pulled.
Since 2008, it's never been in there?
Well, even, it would have been, had to have been between 2018 and now. Before 2008, everything was.
But between 2008 and 18, that's.
And this, we've all, we also change auditing firms occasionally. We review them, their services every five years. And so this firm we have now may not have been the same firm that was with us, you know, 10 years ago.
Well, I'm not particularly questioning the auditors, auditors that we have there. I'm just surprised that it's never by any auditor been audited. surprised that it's never by any auditor been audited.
Right, it, it was not in their random sample when they pulled them.
That may be something we want to require going forward after this outside audit.
Well, I think we were going to also have the treasurer, as part and parcel of her monthly, even her monthly report, let us know what we're paying for outside contractual services, so we made sure that we're, and I brought that up, I made a correction.
Yeah, but I also think it needs to be an outside auditor too. Internally, yes, we do need to check it.
And we can have them, when they come to do our audit this year, we can have them talk to you about their process for reviewing contracts and what they do, so they can kind of give you some insight into their process.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, but before we vote for transparency and education, do you want to go just a little bit further and share with the public why we're considering doing this?
Sure. So, an audit of this magnitude, so our, our town staff can certainly audit this, they're perfectly capable, certified professionals to do this, but with an outside audit, it gives us a second set of eyes to come in and say, yes, you are, you are looking at everything that we're looking at, and our accountants and your accountants believe the same thing. And when we do that, when we take and we validate the effectiveness of our own corrective actions and our own investigations and our own accounting, and we validate that through the matching and concurrence of an outside firm, then we verify to our staff, the town council, and the citizens that we are managing your funds specifically to the, to the encounter in question, to the maximum stamp practicable.
Thank you, Darren, and I would like to second that, I knew you were on top of it, wouldn't say it correctly. This is another one of those steps that we need to take, not just for transparency, but to do the job correctly. Lots of issues, lots of problems, lots of misinformation, and outside set of eyes will help us do a better job evaluating and correcting.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question?
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman? Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I have one more, one more item, Mr. Mayor.
Speak up, please.
And I just want to mention, I want to hold these, but I have motions prepared to, from that audit, to make a letter to request that the overpayments come back to the town and to the citizens, as well as stipulations for contract renewal that, that say the same for future motions, once we have the results of those audits. Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion.
Okay, wait for a second.
Yeah.
No, I...
I thought you made a motion, okay.
I was the audit results.
Once the audit comes, and there could be motions filed.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, for what it's worth.
Yeah, I did too, I misunderstood that too, I thought he was making a motion.
Um, I'd like some clarification on that, Darren, so the audit that we're requiring, Michael said eighteen hours?
Eighteen hours is what they estimated in their quote.
So, we're looking for them to go back to two thousand and eight, at the point that we have the contract on file? Is that what we're asking them?
That is the scope that they proposed, isn't it, Ms. Stalins?
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
But weren't they breaking that down for two thousand and eight to two thousand and eighteen, twenty-four, so on?
That's the way the staff internal audit was being done. Now, when I talk to them, I will ask them to do that, break out some timeframes, so we can get the data in, you know, a couple different ways, but that's the way we're doing our internal.
Okay.
So, it's not a motion, it's just an observation from you?
For the audit, was a motion that already passed.
The audit, yes, but the last comment that you just made?
Yes, the, the result of the audit, um, so I, I've just prepared a motion to, for us to vote on an effort to recover the funds to the taxpayers, but I think it's important to wait until the outcome of the audit, so we know the scope of it.
You okay with that, Val? Do you understand that?
I understand it, but I'm not okay with it.
Okay, all right. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
But, Mr. Mayor?
We don't have any...
Mr. Mayor, can we, I know you, that I'm going to be making the motions likely to go into closed session, um, I have a concern with Item A, which is the closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, more specifically, the four pointed positions by town councils follows, town manager, town treasurer, town clerk, and town attorney pursuant to Section 2.2, thirty-seven, eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia. It is, I guess I can ask this in open, is it our intent, and I think, I think it is, to talk with each one of these individuals tonight, or us to discuss? It's not.
No, discuss evaluations.
I just, just go through, I mean, because it's, it's going to take some time to do that, and I really, honestly, I'll stay here, I've done it before, I'll stay here until midnight, but when you're discussing something as important as this is, I, I don't know whether the time of day and what we have done is, is appropriate. I have no, if, if there's consensus, I'll be glad to make it, but if we could do this in an afternoon committee meeting, when the agenda has not been as extensive as it's been, I personally would favor doing that, and I don't think, what's it, three weeks away or something, that the next committee meetings are, I, I really, I just don't think for us to go in there now, and we've got two other items on top of that, I'm just not so sure it's, it's, it's fair, quite honestly, to neither us nor to the employee to be discussing this after we've been in, doing young man's work here for the last, I'm going on three hours. That's just my, and I, I throw that out for discussion, and you're, sir, you, sir, are the mayor, you're the chair, you decide what you want to do, and I'll make the motion, but I just have some concern that I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want anybody discussing my performance evaluation or whatever, after we've been in a meeting for three hours, three and a half hours, but I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, my understanding is that we are to just look at the evaluations, lightly discuss that, then, by the twenty-second, we're supposed to have something back to HR, and they are going to present that to the, to, on the twenty-sixth, to staff.
Tonight is not to do the final evaluation.
Well, it's not to do the, but I was like, okay.
Correct.
All righty, you're good.
Did I clear that up?
Well, I hope so.
We cleared it up, but I'd like to hear from everybody, maybe even Ashley on that. I happen to agree with Steve on this, I don't know that...
He listened to the end, but it was at the beginning.
Right, that's true, but, you know, to go over all of these summaries, and if for no other reason to honor Ashley's hard work with the attention and detail that it, that it requires.
It's up to you all, I will let you know what the timeline was, and if you want to adjust it, you are welcome to do that. The evaluations were scheduled to be delivered at the next committee meeting, and I forget the date, I apologize, but the twenty-second, I think, is when, so, there was just a little discussion that needed to be had, and this was a scheduled meeting, so this is where it landed, so, that's, that's kind of where the timeline was, um...
And ma'am, isn't this covering basically the consolidation?
Yes, sir.
Effectively?
Right. And then they were to reply on Friday, the twenty-sixth, ain't that correct?
Yes, sir.
I haven't backed down, it's on twenty-sixth.
I need a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we go into closed session for Item A, closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, more specifically, the four pointed positions by town councils follows, town manager, town treasurer, town clerk, and town attorney pursuant to Section 2.2, three-seven-one-one, A1 of the Code of Virginia, and we go into closed session for the purpose of cost negotiations for Red Point Tap House right-of-way evaluations pursuant to Section 2.2, thirty-seven, eleven, A3 of the Code of Virginia, and we go into closed session for the discussion of acquisition disposition of real property, more specifically, the Grange at Ten Main pursuant to Section 2.2, thirty-seven, eleven, A3 of the Code of Virginia. A motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Call for the question?
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Ah.
See, all around two AM.
Can you take a photo?
One hour. I asked one hour, we can do one hour.
All right.
Bill, do I need to go and go through the whole verbiage again or can I just go for what was initially mentioned?
Yeah.
In the motion to go back into...
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we... That I start... That we... Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to certify that only those items mentioned in the previous motion to go into closed session were discussed in closed session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we now return to regular open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
For the record, that's backwards.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, to open to open session, so...
For the record...
Open for us in...
For the transcript, that's going to be reversed.
Right.
You have to come back... Yeah, we're good.
Let me do the one and haul together. We don't have it covered. Go ahead.
I have a motion. Have a second. Have a second?
Did he say anything?
Second. Have a second. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
We have old business. Anyone have any old businesses?
Yes. It's my understanding that the attorney has looked into the legality of writing a check for $400?
We come to the conclusion that there's nobody to object, so...
Okay.
Oh, it's not something that should become a habit because the fee is paid for the purpose of paying for the advertisement.
Right. No, I understand all that. Michael, I believe I'm correct that we voted to do that?
We did, so we'll make sure that check goes out.
When it's someone... When a citizen comes to us with something that we need to correct as wrongdoing, I think there's nothing wrong for us to do that.
Okay.
What was that now? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That was...
Oh, okay. All right. Do you have any additional discussion?
No, never does.
Okay, well, so I got additional discussion. Apparently you don't want it, so it's mine on me. You're meeting the jury.